Here.
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 None at race?
Here.
Here.
I'd like to give a brief overview of the property. The commission will vote. Also like to summarize. A Alagama statute, a municipal subdivision plat. Division regulations previously adopted. Public hearings are required on each plat and we welcome any and all public comments from persons codified in laws and regulations. When you come forward, please state your name and address. Now, at this time. On tonight's agenda item. Seeing no one, close the citizen communication. And now, consent agenda. Mr. Cotton?
Yes ma'am. We just have two items on your consent agenda this evening. Both are bond extension waiver requests. One is for Ashton Lakes Phase 3B. You can see the subject property there with Tivoli to the west and Ashton Park to the east. And the second, bond extension waiver request is Longleaf Crossing Phase 4 subdivision. And you've got the materials in your packet and happy to answer any questions.
Have a motion.
Second meeting of January the 6th and regular.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto new business.
Yes, the first item on new business this evening is a request from Links Crossing LLC for a revised preliminary plat for a 27 lot conventional residential subdivision. It's Phase 2 of Auburn Links Crossing located just to the north and south of Westover Street. Property, most of the lots do meet the lot width requirements for the lot sizes that they are. However, one of the comments made within the report, these four lots here and this one here do not, I'm sorry, this one here, do not meet the minimum lot width for the lots that, the size that they are. So, they can remedy that by making the lot smaller in area or making them 70 feet across the street. And that is noted in the staff report. Other than that, we do recommend approval with all of staff comments.
Okay.
And I think maybe this is an example of maybe a possible change. Y'all may recommend, I'm not asking you to do it for in the future, but the part about the lot width being the wrong size is because we made a couple of these lots deeper to go down to the creek edges or to line up with what we did in Phase 1. And just to give you an example of how this process works, we did Phase 1, there's $10 million of houses getting built in Phase 1. This is economic project that's off and running. We're not building the houses, we're selling the lots. Just this magnitude. We came in and zoned 31 acres. There was a few little quirks with that. We came back with you guys. And it all is in the density, the master plan is 100 lots. Well, when we do preliminary plat, we haven't spent a whole lot of money on engineering. It's very expensive at this point. When we come into Phase 2, we find the sewer line breaks a little bit different than we anticipated. So, there's three or four more lots taken out of Phase 3, which is already approved, and moved to the here. And so, we're back today because of the lots have increased. It's well within the density range, okay? So, there's three or four more lots than what you saw and we're paying a penalty, I think y'all see my check there, to do that or paying another fee to do this. That's one part of maybe something y'all can think about in the future. As to, the break for you guys on the lot size is 10,000 square feet. I haven't been able to figure where that comes from. When you go past that, you have to go to 70-foot front or 60-foot front. I'm not sure, it's a little bigger than what we have there. The four lots to the right, you see on your screen on the sheet I gave you, we brought those to a lot line that already existed that were there. We can shorten that and have 15 feet of no man's land. When we talked with some, and some of the people that were here before, some of you may remember this, you recommended I go to BZA and we were headed there. And we're gonna go to BZA and ask for that variance to make these lots a little bit bigger and keep the same frontage. Now, I thought we would get final plat before we went to BZA. I don't know if this is a chicken egg thing, but, so we'll go to BZA and then come back for final plat if that's the way that needs to go. And that's what's been recommended to me from Jay now, okay? So, as y'all meet in the future and you look at the ordinance and you look at this, could y'all maybe think about why making a lot a little bit bigger is a penalty? These make these lots much nicer. I was hoping that maybe even you could change where it's discretionary to the planning director. I'm not looking forward to going to BZA. I think we'll be successful there. Y'all recommended that we do that. But it just seems to awful delay and big step, a lot of steps to make a project better. It doesn't hurt anybody. I think y'all, and that'll be the argument we make at BZA or the discussion we'll have, this doesn't harm anybody. But I just make sure y'all realize that if you go past 10,000 feet, even if it's a unique lot, that your frontage has to change the way the ordinance is written now. I don't understand that philosophy. So, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. I'm gonna sit down now. And I think if there was some discretionary left to the planning director, maybe this wouldn't have to be in the future. We'll go do what we're doing now, but we're gonna expect to get approval at BZA, hopefully then come back to you for final plat. Fair enough? Okay, thank you.
This does require. Seeing no one?
Does that meet the subdivision regulations?
Yes sir, it does. Just the, Katie mentioned those lots that currently don't meet that requirement, so that'll have to be dealt with and that's cited in the report.
As presented, it does not meet the subdivision.
Right, it's revised preliminary plat, so the applicant understands that that will need to be remedied before the final plat can be considered.
Change it or get a variance.
They have not gone to the board of zoning adjustment yet. No sir.
Let me get that clear, mate. If we approve it, do we approve it subject to it meeting all the?
Yes sir.
Requirements?
Yes sir.
Then the BZA would give them the variance, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Then he can come back then with a final plat, platted to the width that he?
Yes sir, that's exactly right.
A motion to approve case 49 with staff comments. A second.
I have a motion.
Aye.
Any opposed? District of the Southern Board, Suns Ford Parking.
Good evening commissioners. This is a request by Suns Ford. Property owner is South Hood LLC. It's a conditional use request for a, basically an expansion of an auto dealership. The property is located at 114 East Veterans Boulevard. And the applicant is essentially requesting to expand the dealership. The lot that you see, the site plan that you see is a, basically, it's currently vacant, but the property owner would like to pave it, essentially use it as an area for excess inventory, as well as have vehicles there displayed for sale. Staff is recommending approval. And the subject property is CDD. You saw a request somewhat related to the property to the east where a service center was approved. This is all part of their expansion of their dealership and services. Did not receive any comments from citizens. And the only kind of major comment from us was a recommendation to provide more screening between the hotel and the lot. The required backyard is only five feet because the hotel use is such an intense use, but just thought it would be an improvement to the site to have more of a screening or landscaping there. Happy to answer any questions. And Brett Basquin is the authorized representative.
Back one slide or forward, I don't know the, yep, thank you.
Let me ask, when you're recommending that the visual screening be applied, are you recommending that we place that as a requirement of approval?
Just in our, you know, the ordinance only allows us to require what it requires, which is five feet and the basic landscaping that's required for the site. Staff at times feels the need to interject a little bit of oomph to improve the site, but it's only a recommendation.
Since this is conditional use approval, you think then that that, it's incompatible without that fence?
It is. It meets the uses along the road, you know, auto-related, road service uses, so no issue of compatibility.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Good evening. The next request is a conditional use to allow an ICE station, a road service use at 1791 Shug Jordan Parkway. The property owner is Larry Delizano and the applicant or representative is James Adams of the Lorna Group. This property has been developed as a small strip center and convenience store since the late 90s, so the use has been here. He's requesting to put the ICE station right here, you'll see Donahue Drive and Shug Jordan here, and there's the gas pump, so that's the location. Some photographs, you'll see basically where the silver or gray truck is will be where they want to locate that. It's to the back of the lot along a private access drive. This is just a shot from Donahue looking along the back access drive to where the building will be. And then one from Shug Jordan looking across the parking lot and you'll see the site back at the far corner. There are just some comments about development, some development items that we'll look at like screening for the corridor. We are recommending approval and the applicant is here with us if there's any additional questions that you may have. And then here's a couple of photos. This is what the structure currently looks like. They're aware of the fact that they'll be moving it into the city and there'll be corridor requirements for both exterior materials for the building as well as screening of the equipment.
The corridor overlay talks about plating. You're talking about screening.
Well, the screening of the condensers and any mechanicals, but then they also, there's a cladding requirement on the corridor that they are aware of.
They are aware of it.
Yes. Yes, and the requirements for that material, building materials in the staff report.
Anything you want to add to it?
Out of hearing. Commissioners?
Advertisement meet our final ordinance requirements.
It'll have to go, those will have to be permitted.
I move for approval of the 1791 Shug Jordan ICE station, subject to conforming to all requirements specified in the staff report with particular attention to the cladding and screening requirements.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. Do you need item six?
Okay. This next item is a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for a road service use, specifically a parking deck to be located at 100 North Gay Street in the Urban Core zoning district. The property owner is Auburn Bank and their representative this evening is Cole Williams with Goodwin Mills in K-wood. The Auburn Bank property has been occupied by Auburn Bank since the mid 60s. I think 1964 is when they located there. I'm gonna get to the aerial. In 2012, the Super 6 was constructed. That's the drive-through portion on the internal portion of the lot. Sorry. Uh oh. Okay. And then, two years ago, the temporary parking lot for downtown merchants was installed in this portion of the Auburn Bank property. The total area comprises just over five acres and they are undergoing a redevelopment of the entire property. And as part of that redevelopment, they will be, the first phase will consist of a tear-down rebuild of their building, which will also include retail commercial space on the bottom level, as well as three stories of additional office space. So, there'll be about 96,000 square feet of floor area in that building in Phase 1. Additionally, in Phase 1 is a proposed parking deck that is about five and a half stories in height. It's got 535 parking spaces. And Phase 2 is slated to be a mixed-use building that is three stories. The first floor residential, I'm sorry, first floor grand fore commercial and retail, and then the second and third floors will be residential containing 10 condominiums. The reason we are here today is just for the conditional use of the parking deck. And as I mentioned, it's five levels and it will have 535 spaces on the, within the deck. And we all know of the parking inadequacy downtown, which is currently being remedied with the city parking deck that will be built on Wright Street. And Auburn Bank is adding this parking deck that will support their redevelopment. And this is a, you know, as it sits, a use by itself. It's not just for Auburn Bank, or they would not have been here with us. So, this is a private deck that will support their surrounding redevelopment in addition to however they see fit. They may be able to provide a little more information on that. The access to the property roughly remains the same. There'll be some reconfiguration of the curb cuts, but they are not adding additional curb cuts or removing any. So, the main drive here is how the parking deck will be accessed and exit off of Burton Street, or again, internal to the parking off of Mag or off of Gay. They have added sidewalks to traverse within the development, leading to sidewalks that are in front of their new buildings. And I will say that the sidewalks in front of the new office building range in a size from about 15 feet wide to 18 feet based on the site plan, and roughly about the same width for the smaller building north of that. They are adding on-street parking in front of both of these buildings along Gay. And that will take some coordination with staff when we get to the DRT process about how a lease agreement or an easement agreement would be pursued because this is their property, but would be accessed for the public as a public sidewalk and as well as the parking spaces encroaching into their property. In addition to the design guidelines for the Urban Core, parking decks that cannot be screened with a building are required to plant a minimum five-foot buffer between the street and the structure itself. And the applicant has indicated that there is sufficient space to plant that buffer. They've got about 20 feet right here and it tapers down to about 18 feet on the north. So, they've got sufficient space to plant that buffer to kind of mitigate the surrounding We did get a couple of phone calls for informational purposes and there was one adjoining property owner who sent us an email who was opposed to the development. Staff does recommend approval with all of our comments. And once the, the project will go to the downtown design and review committee as well as the DRT, and that's when the final design of the redevelopment will be finalized. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I do have one question. The 18 to 20 feet that you talked about of potential buffer?
On this side of the deck?
Have they indicated that they intend to use that whole amount for buffer?
That is one of my comments, is to provide a landscape plan showing what will be planted there. So, that's, I will probably get that in the next week or so.
Representative?
Good evening commissioners. My name's Andrew Taylor. I'm with Taylor Mathis from Atlanta. We have been engaged by the Auburn Bank as their development manager. I've got Cole Williams, who's our civil engineer with Goodwin Mills K-wood. Katie pretty much summarized most of the things. I will add just a few comments about the future development parcel where the Super 6 is. As she pointed out, that's currently improved with a gravel parking lot that is leased by the bank to the downtown merchants association. I think they use it primarily for retail employee parking. That will go away. We're gonna be staging construction on that site, but after the completion of that, it's our intention to demolish the existing gravel parking lot and grass that entire site, so which would greatly improve the aesthetics. We don't know what'll happen to that site in the future, but until such time as it may be developed, we do intend to get rid of that parking lot and have a nice green space there. As Katie mentioned, we have ample buffer, much more than the five-foot minimum landscape buffer required to do some screening, landscape screening on the east elevation of the parking deck facing Burton. We're meeting just in a few weeks, we'll start submitting those plans, architectural plans and landscaping plans for the parking deck and going through that process with DDRC, and we will submit those landscape and planning plans at that time. We're happy to answer any other questions y'all might have.
My name is Cole Williams with Goodwin Mills in K-wood. Like Katie mentioned, I think the intent is to fully landscape the buffer, the 20 feet between the right-of-way line and the parking deck. And then also, the conditional use portion of the request is not for the parking deck itself, but for the fact that the parking deck will be used for, could be used for some purpose other than the bank building. The current zoning would allow for a parking deck to be built, it's just the fact that it could be rented out to day users or to other users or to the city or some other purposes, the purpose of the conditional use.
Good evening commissioners. My name's James Long. I'm the resident that has the townhouse at the very corner of Magnolia and Burton and I'm also the treasurer and secretary and a board member for the Magnolia East Townhome Association. So, I represent several of our homeowners who are here and others that could not be here. I did want to say thank you to Taylor Mathis for reaching out and kind of explaining to us a little bit about what they wanted to do. And the parking deck is not directly from our townhomes, but we do have some significant concerns about perhaps this conditional use that makes it such a big parking deck for that space. We're on the border where we kind of move from commercial to a more residential area and I'm not as familiar with where Urban Core stops, but I think it may stop right on Burton Street. Maybe I'm mistaken there. But a parking deck that is five or five and a half stories I have seen in some of the drawings is a fairly unsightly addition to that sightline to my properties. And we're also concerned about the potential increased traffic. Burton is one way, there's some on-street parking and it's pretty narrow. And so, we're a little worried about the increased traffic. Primarily concern of one of the residents is just the height of the garage and uncertain about how effective a landscape barrier will be from kind of cleaning that up in our sightline. And then also concerned about just an 18-foot offset from the sidewalk for such a small street, just kind of having that looming over our street there. And I think the other thing that would just be kind of a question for those in the And I think the other thing that would just be kind of a question for those in the know is with that future development Phase Three, which we certainly appreciate the removal of the gravel parking lot, which has been a nuisance, both in terms of water runoff and debris, and also some increased traffic. The green space is fantastic, and we appreciate that. Would we have an opportunity to comment before future development would occur on that parcel, or is this meeting the only opportunity we'll have for public hearing? And with that question, I will sign in before I walk away. Allison, thank you.
It would... The question about whether or not there would be another item requiring a public hearing, it all depends on what the future development holds, whether or not there are future uses requested that would require conditional use approval. So there could or could not be future items related to this development that would require a public hearing.
Second.
Can I ask a question? Is there any indication or plan, either in the city's new parking deck or this one, that the employees will have access to parking that's designated for them?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Opportunity to look at that. From street?
It ranges from 20 feet on the south to just right at 18 on...
Oh.
Yeah, from... No, no. Oh, from the street.
You're talking from the... Oh, from the street.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed.
Seven.
Go.
This is a conditional use request from the City of Auburn, yours truly, for a public service use. A park, a public park, which will include a community and recreation center, a pool, and other amenities that would be open to the public. The subject property is currently rural. And the site plan meets all the requirements of the ordinance, and staff is recommending approval. The future land use designates the property for park, cemetery. That's that type of use, which is in line with the proposal. Not too many comments from staff. We did receive some comments from neighbors either for or against connecting the road here. There's currently right-of-way that exists along the property there, but at this time, there's no... there's not a plan to connect them. And I'll let either Allison or staff from Parks and Rec comment more if you have more detailed questions about the proposal. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the site plan.
I'm sorry, look.
Yep.
You said there's right-of-way, but there's currently no plan to connect those.
Correct. You can see... You can kind of see it here. Actually, the best place to see it is on the vicinity map. You can see a little line, just like that. The facility would be located kind of where that star is. There is road that goes here, and there is right-of-way that goes here.
Okay.
But that would not be connected at this time.
Got it. Thank you.
Require a public hearing? It does?
My mic's not...
Hello? There you go. Magic. Okay. So this does require a public hearing. I'll open that now. Anyone like to speak in this agenda item?
I'm James Anderson. I'm the much worse half of Karen Anderson. Karen and her father, who's here, are right across the street on Ogle Tree, 668 and... 674. Right. You got a pointer?
Yeah.
Which one? Which one do I need to...
That one.
Right now, the pointer. There you go. Okay. This big lot is Karen's, and that's her father's. And so we're right here. Now, I'm guessing that's the fire station? Right? And this is elementary school? So is the plan, the entrance to this, gonna be here on Ogle Tree at the elementary school? There's no plans to put a new entrance in our front yard? I mean, that's our main question. Okay. And then, is it gonna be an entrance here and through this neighborhood?
Eventually.
But right now, it's not gonna be. There's gonna be one entrance at the elementary school. Okay. And that's the first phase that we have. And we hate that children have something to do. We were just... We're here for information purposes, wanted to know where the traffic was gonna be. So right now, as I understand it, there's just one entrance with the elementary school already, and there's already a road there. There's not anything with these... our neighbors up here, or any from the back neighborhood.
The master plan concedes a connection to Grove Road.
Yeah, the master plan has it coming straight across, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I hadn't seen anything in the master plan that says there's any entrances here or down the road here. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. If anyone else would like to make a comment? Seeing... Oh, yes, ma'am? Right now? Yes. Yes, ma'am. And please state your name and address.
My name is Shay Smith. I live off of Ogle Tree Road. I'm fairly new to Auburn, and I am thrilled to see this coming here. I moved from North Georgia, where we had YMCA's and community centers and biking and running trails. And I just am curious, are there any plans to convert the sort of existing trails at Lake Willmore into a more usable, user-friendly system with three to four to five miles of crushed gravel for people who don't like to run on hard surfaces? Is the pool an indoor pool and an outdoor pool?
I think Parks and Rec is coming to help.
You guys may have already addressed all these questions. I just don't know.
I'm Allison Hall with Parks and Recreation. In the Phase One, we will not be addressing the trails. There are currently some trails that are already out there that are mountain bike trails. However, in future phases, we will be adding trails to the entire property. As far as the pool, it is an outdoor pool. There will not be an indoor pool on this site, but we are working on future plans for another site that would have an indoor pool.
What about basketball courts?
In this facility, we will have a... two full-size gymnasiums. So we will have indoor basketball, indoor volleyball, potential for indoor footsle. And then we will also have six outdoor pickleball courts. In Phase One, we do not have any basketball courts. Yes, no problem.
Thank you.
What now?
Indoor what?
Futsal. Indoor soccer. We currently play that... Yeah, we currently play that at Boykin Community Center Gym. It's a growing program.
That's great. Nope. I think that's good. Y'all have any other questions?
Hi, I'm Hal Schenk. I'm at 1905 Wrightsmill Road. So I'd just like to follow up on the question. So where can I... And you said you were new, so I'm here for two months. So is this my... Was it one? Kind of shoot it at people?
No.
So I would be interested in hearing from the Parks and Rec folks about sort of what the general footprint is. So the original... or the new facility's gonna be kind of right in here. And you talked a little bit about developing some of the trails through here. So either do you... For the Phase Two and Phase Three of this development, what do you envision? Or is there something that I could see, so I know what the long-term vision is?
Yes. So the Parks and Rec...
Do you want the pointer?
The Parks and Recreation master plan, which was adopted last year, all of it's online. It shows all of the parks and facilities, all the future plans, all of the future programming. It's on the city's website. That's probably the easiest place to get it, on the Parks and Recreation page. And if you have specific questions, you can always reach out to Mr. Cotton.
Thank you.
After the meeting, I've actually got a sheet that you can have. It's a concept... It's a concept plan for the whole park.
Okay. So public hearing is still open. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one. Oh, do you... Are you sure?
I'm Tom Stokes. I live on 2040 Windway, which is right back up behind where the swimming pool is gonna be. And I noticed the plan. I read the handout, and it says that there's gonna be enough landscaping and everything to obscure that view from our backyard. So I guess I believe you. But I mean, I appreciate the park, but I just would like to be sure that we have some visual barrier, because we are right in the backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please sign in before you leave? Okay. Anyone else? Public hearing. Okay? Oh, sorry.
Hello. I'm Gary Bervard. I'm at 601 Ogle Tree Road. And so I'm kind of on that back corner, to the left. What else is happening over there? I hear Phase Two and Three. I tried to find some stuff online and couldn't get it to work.
There are some future ball fields that are proposed, and I'm actually having color copies made of the concept plan, so that all... everyone that's interested can leave with one.
Okay. With the ball fields, is that two years down the road? Three? Do we know? Way further? Would there be fencing and stuff? Because apparently that line is the back of our property and several other people's. Would there be some sort of screening, fencing? See if I can figure out how to work it. Top button. I'm right there. We have several other people right in there. This little subdivision, I forgot the name of it, Oak... Oak Hollow. There we go. If you're gonna have some sort of activity back there, I'm kind of wondering about foot traffic coming back to the property. If there's no fencing or anything like that, they could cross into our property and not know it. And depending on access, could that cause, I hate to say it, but problems with people trying to break into homes? Stuff like that. Not to say that would happen, but you never know. Once somebody finds out a way to get around, that could be an access. There was a lake back there at one time, and I was kind of wondering about that. If that lake could be developed again, the dam put up partway, that could be used as a water place for canoeing, fishing, or what have you. Something like that, I thought would be a good idea. Years ago, you could fish back there. We had some people... My dad worked at the VA in Tuskegee, and we had some people come down there, and they caught largemouth bass back there. So anyway, kind of concerned about property values, access, and that sort of stuff. I wanted to ask about that. Okay? Thank you.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else would like to speak? No one? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move to approve item seven on the agenda with staff.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Yes, I have a question. Allison, either Allison, maybe. This current... what we're looking at is gonna have any impact on the existing trails or no? Okay. And we have copies. They're back. So please get one before you leave. Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. Our last agenda item is Auburn Farms preliminary plat extension. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, ma'am. We do have one item under other business, which is a request by Auburn Farms for a one-year extension of their current preliminary plat approval, which covers multiple phases. And these are the phases shown. If you recall, Auburn Farms is a large plan development district that will be immediately east of Woodward Oaks Plan Development District on the east side of North Donahue, in the vicinity of Miracle Road.
Yes. Can I ask a question? This is really just a point-of-order question. What makes this other business and not a regular agenda item?
Well, it doesn't... It doesn't require a public hearing, and it's just something that doesn't come up very often. And I just put it under other business, just to sort of separate it from the normal business that you're accustomed to.
Okay. Thank you. Not require a public hearing. Commissioners, if you have any questions, discussions, or motions?
Move to approve item eight on the agenda.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there any other communication from staff or anything? One moment. I have none. Meeting adjourned.